It's so quiet down here. Okay, this evening we are going to open up our board meeting. This is our regular final budget meeting, September the 13th, starting at 5:01 PM. We welcome each of you that's here today. We especially welcome our ROTC group that will be presenting before us at this time. We begin, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have a flag folding this evening.
And you can be seated at this time. Color Guard, to the stage.
For more than 200 years, the American flag has been the symbol of our nation's unity, as well as a source of pride and inspiration for millions of citizens. Born on June 14th, 1777, the Second Continental Congress determined the flag of the United States be 13 stripes, alternating between seven red and six white, and that the Union be 13 stars, white and a blue field representing a new constellation. Between 1777 and 1960, the shape and design of the flag evolved into the flag presented before you today. The 13 horizontal stripes represent the original 13 colonies, while the stars represent the 50 states of the Union. The colors of the flag are symbolic as well. Red symbolizes hardiness and valor, white signifies purity and innocence, and blue represents vigilance, perseverance, and justice. Traditionally, a symbol of liberty, the American flag has carried the message of freedom and inspired Americans both at home and abroad. The first fold of our flag is a symbol of life. The second symbolizes the words of Thomas Paine when he stood in the Second Virginia Convention at St. John's Church and spoke the words that ring true in every American patriot's heart: "Give me liberty, or give me death." The third is made in honor and remembrance of the veterans departing our ranks and who gave a portion of their life for the defense of our country and to attain peace. The fourth stands for the duty of all to preserve our liberty en masse. As Thomas Jefferson said, "Educate and inform the whole mass of the people, for they are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty." The fifth fold is a tribute to our country. In the words of Stephen Decatur, "Our country, in dealing with other countries, may she always be right, but it is still our country, right or wrong." The sixth fold is for where our hearts lie. It is with our hearts that we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The seventh fold is a tribute to our armed forces, for it is through the armed forces that we protect our country and our flag against all enemies. They are true heroes who have given their lives for something bigger than themselves. The eighth fold is a tribute to those who entered into the valley of the shadow of death, that we might see the light of day, and to honor our mothers, those who give their hearts and soul to the nurture of patriots for whom our flag flies on Mother's Day. The ninth fold is a tribute to our missing, imprisoned, and lost brothers and sisters in arms, the flag for which they gave so much, some the ultimate sacrifice. May it always fly high and proud in their honor. The tenth fold is a tribute to Father, who modeled agape love for their mother, as well as to his country, for he too has given his sons and daughters for the defense of our country since he or she was first born. The eleventh fold memorializes all of our fellow Americans lost on that fateful day in September of 2001. In the words of Jeff Parnas, "When Americans lend a hand to one another, nothing is impossible. We're not about what happened on 9/11, we're about what happened on 9/12. Liberty and freedom, like patriots, are always on duty." The twelfth fold stands for the words of Thomas Jefferson as he wrote the Declaration of Independence saying, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We are only guaranteed the right to pursue and must protect and defend our great flag and the freedoms for which it stands, in order to assure this pursuit may be undertaken by generations of Americans to come." The thirteenth fold represents the ideals of the 13 original colonies of personal and religious freedoms in a land of plenty. When completely folded, the stars of our flag are uppermost, reminding us of our national motto, "In God we trust."
Please stand as our Honor Guard retires the American flag.
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you to the Treasure Coast High School Air Force JROTC cadets and their teacher, Master Sergeant Joyce, U.S. Air Force retired, for the presentation of colors and the flag folding ceremony in remembrance of the tragic events of September 11th, 2001. At this time, we'd like to invite the board down and the cadets and their teacher back in to get a photograph.
Okay, the cadets, as you see them, as the way you're facing from right to left, on the far end here is Cadet First Lieutenant Jayden Bider. Next to him is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Amanda Huntington. Next to her is Cadet Major Rachel Lee. Right next to her is Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Sarah Cherry. Just to her right is Cadet Master Sergeant Ethan Velasquez. And on the far end down there, the big tall guy, is Cadet First Lieutenant David Ritchie.
Our cadets came in honor of 9/11 this past weekend, this Sunday was the actual 9/11 date. My, I mean, I'm doing everything I can not to just bawl and weep right now, because my niece, Cece Ross, was one of the heroes, that one of the heroes, that went down on 9/11, Flight 93, and we had her memorial in downtown Fort Pierce this past Sunday. Our students are absolutely incredible, and our instructors are even more so incredible, because they had to be taught by great people in order to learn what they have learned today. And so, we honor 9/11 heroes, we honor our students in what they just performed in front of us today, to show St. Lucy County what we are doing in public schools. Thank you so much, going out again to the Treasure Coast High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Leaders, Cadet Leaders. We've recognized them for their Maya Powell Table Ceremony at the Florida League of Cities Luncheon in Hollywood, Florida. The cadets have presented the colors superbly and conducted the flag folding ceremony, and we are certainly proud of our students today. Would you please all stand with me for the kids' hope pledge, Hunter's pledge? As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. Thank you so much. Again, I want to thank all of our teachers and administrators and everyone that worked so hard to produce what we produce here in St. Lucy County Public Schools. At this time, we're going to open up the public hearing for the final milage and budget for 2022-23. We are going to ask our CFO, Michelle Thomas, to please come and provide us with the brief overview of the proposed final milages and the final budget for the year 2022-23.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Prince. This is the final budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing was held on August 2nd, 2022. The information regarding milage rates is exactly identical to what was presented on August 2nd, with a slight change in budget, so we will go through this fairly quickly while I still cover the required elements. At the end of the presentation, we will vote to approve final milage rates. After final milage rates are approved, we will vote to approve the final budget and resolutions, all three resolutions at one time. This slide shows the taxable value, milage and tax collection revenue estimates at 100% and 96%. We budget at 96%, and last year we collected 96.24%. As a reminder, the board must levy the 3.2310 required local effort and the 1.0000 voted operating milage. The 0.7480 discretionary milage and the 1.5000 capital operating milage are maximums. The only action the board could take would be to reduce those, and I do not recommend reducing. The total milage is 6.4790. The board does not have the authority to increase the milages as they are set by legislature, and it is our maximum milage for the 2022-2023 school year. This slide shows a history of the milage rates from 2007 and '08. Over this time, our highest milage rate was in 10/11 at 8.1770. This slide shows the break between the operating capital and voted milages and where the legislature demanded a shift. Capital outlay shifted from two mils in '07-'08 to one and a half mils in '09-'10. From 1920 through 2223, we have an additional one mil voted operating milage. This slide shows the average impact to annual taxes of homeowners in the county. We get this information from the property appraisers office each year. The average taxable value in the county increased by approximately 25.62%, and there is a reduction in the non-voted milage by 6.39%. This slide shows the taxable value history. The entire county's gross taxable value makes up the taxes that you will see on the next slide. This slide shows the gross tax collection history, and for illustration purposes on this slide, I excluded the voted one mil, and will show the impact of it on the next slide. On this slide, you can see the impact that the additional voted one mil will have on our collections for 2022-23, resulting in $35 million additional revenue. This is the fourth year recognizing revenue from the one mil, and it cannot exceed four years as by law. The additional revenue generated from this one mil is used to recruit and retain qualified teachers, improve school security, improve mental health services, and fund other essential operations that preserve important school programs. Something to note is that tax collections and taxable values are not increasing at the same rate. From 2122 to 2223, the taxable value increases 25.62%, but the collections increase 18.46%. That is because the legislature mandates what the required local effort is, and they've capped our other milage rates. Looking back at 2007-8, we were collecting $184 million. For consistent comparison purposes, we exclude the additional voted one mil on this slide. We would be proposed to collect $191 million this year, so we are up 6.3 million compared to that benchmark pre-great recession year, and cumulatively $486.9 million in reduced tax burden to the property owners in the county. Incorporating the voted one mil, we are proposed to collect $226 million, and over by 41.2, compared to that benchmark pre-great recession year, but still down cumulatively $375.9 million in reduced tax burden to the property owners. The rollback rate discussion is something we are required to talk about. Here's a table that helps explain it. In 2122, the taxable value was $28.9 billion. The milage rate was 6.8530. That milage rate generated $198 million. The rollback rate is a calculated rate that will generate the same revenue using this year's net taxable value. The calculated rollback rate is 5.6088. So, 5.6088 times the current taxable value generates $198 million. Since we have a proposed rate of 6.4790, which exceeds the 5.6088, we have to compare those two and make a public statement that the proposed rate is 15.51% greater than the rollback rate. Here is the summary of the budget. This includes beginning reserves, revenues appropriations, and ending reserves. Grand total of $961,40,057.35, which is amended throughout the year by official board action. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. At this time, we do have a, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding any portion of what has been said to us with our CEO, Michelle, please come at this time to the podium regarding these areas. Okay, seeing that we have no one in the public that wants to speak on this, we are going to turn it into Superintendent's hands for his recommendations.
I recommend the board approve the final required local effort milage of 3.2310 mils as specified in the Resolution 2022-2023, Trim Final A.
Board, the Superintendent has recommended that we approve. May I have a motion and a second? So moved by Ingersoll, second by Kelly. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve the final district school tax discretionary operating milage of .7480 mils as specified in Resolution 2022-2023, Trim Final A.
Board, the Superintendent has made his recommendation. I entertain a motion and a second. So moved Ingersoll, second. Second, Ms. Harley. Any discussions? No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve the final district discretionary local capital improvement milage of 1.5 mils as specified in Resolution 2022-2023, Trim Final A.
Superintendent Prince has made his recommendation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved Kelly. Second Ingersoll. Any discussion? No discussion, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? This motion carries 5-0. Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve the final district additional voted milage of 1.0 mils as specified in the Resolution 2022-2023, Final A.
Superintendent made his recommendation. Board approve for approval. Give me, please, a motion and a second. So moved Ingersoll, second Harley. Any discussion, Board? No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 here. Superintendent?
I recommend the board adopt the 2022-2023 final budget in the amount of $961,40,057.35.
Superintendent has recommended the board approve the final budget in the amount that has been stated. May I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Mr. Kelly, motion, second Ingersoll. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. One more to go. Superintendent?
I recommend the board adopt Resolution 2022-23, Trim Final B, Resolution 2022-23, Trim Final C, and Resolution 2022-23, Trim Final D.
I entertain a motion. So moved Ms. Harley, second. Second, Mr. Ingersoll. All in, any discussion? Board, all in favor? Any opposed? This motion carries 5-0. At this time, we go straight into our special order of businesses. Superintendent?
Go ahead, Ms. Mark.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, at this time, I'd like to invite Lynda Gallup and Lurana C. Hillard to the podium. They are representatives from the Daughters of American Revolution to read a proclamation regarding Constitution Week.
Madam Chairman, Superintendent Prince, and Board members. The School Board of St. Lucy County proclamation designating September 17th through 23rd, 2022 as Constitution Week.
Whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through the 23rd, and...
Whereas September 17th, 2022, is the actual 235th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America, and...
Whereas the Constitution ensures the rights of every American and provides the framework for the administration of our country, yet few know the date or celebrate its importance in any fashion, and...
Whereas the United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights, and...
Whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, which petitioned Congress in 1955 to set aside September 17th to the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week, and the resolution being later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower.
Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in St. Lucy County Public Schools, and encourages all citizens to observe this important day in the nation's history through activities, learning, and social events.
This coming Saturday, September 17th, is Constitution Day. Our chapter, the course, Dickney Harper chapter in Fort Pierce is going to present Constitution booklets, present them to people that are coming to the farmer's market in Fort Pierce. So, we hope to have a good turnout. I have little booklets that are the Constitution booklets that I would like to give each board member, if I may.
Superintendent, may we have your recommendation for the proclamation?
I recommend the board adopt the proclamation designating the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in St. Lucy Public Schools.
Board, the Superintendent has recommended that we approve the proclamation designating the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in St. Lucy County Public Schools. May I entertain a motion and a second? So moved Ms. Harley. So moved Ms. Harley, second Mr. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries five zero. Thank you so much, ladies, for coming.
We wish to thank the Board and Superintendent Prince on behalf of the Chorus, Dickney Harper Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We truly appreciate this opportunity to share the knowledge and importance of Constitution Day and hope that the school community will access a wealth of Constitution Day activities for planning lessons for students K-12. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we want, I want special recognition now. Do we have any star awards? Ms. Lydia?
Yes, ma'am. The first award goes to Charles Ryer. He is the media arts teacher at the Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucie. If he can come forward. Charles Ryer, congratulations.
Board, I ask that we go back down again to congratulate our star recipient.
Charles was nominated by Steve Devlin, who is in our Media Services Department. With the help and dedication of Mr. Ryer, the Media Services Department was able to livestream the twenty-twenty-two Superintendent Welcome Back kickoff to every school in the district. This was a major success by all accounts. Mr. Ryer went above and beyond the simple task of operating the soundboard to support this district and his team. He truly was an integral part in the success of this kickoff. Congratulations to Charles, and thank you. Next, we have Rodney Long, who is the plant manager at Southport Middle School, and I don't see him in the audience. We will make sure he gets his award. Rodney was nominated by Principal Susan Seal. Rodney went above and beyond to make sure the campus was ready for their over one-hundred-sixth grade student transition camp, which occurred right before the school year started. Rodney made it happen even though several members of his team were out ill for several days. He went into work on the weekends to get everything set up, and the administrative team sincerely appreciates the efforts of Mr. Rodney Long. So congratulations and thank you, Rodney. And the next group of the star awards goes to a dynamic team from Sam Gaines Academy. These individuals were nominated by Dr. Mary Huffstetter, the coordinator of early childhood education. And I don't believe they're here either. They were definitely invited, and I hope that we'll be able to recognize them in person at their school. Yvette Acosta, the bookkeeper, Joel Gamble, the custodian, April Glover, custodian, April Clark, custodian, Carmen Aguilar, custodian, Jean Ismail, custodian, Jermaine Bryant, who is also a custodian, Jerome Jones, who is a custodian, and Patricia Sims. This awesome team was nominated for their assistance with all of the deliveries, recycling, trash removal, and ordering that was involved in all of this during the summer with the play with the purp, play with purpose rollout. It was a tremendous amount of work, and they were all so helpful and kind, going above and beyond to make sure our schools had the materials they needed. So congratulations to this wonderful team. And that concludes our star awards for this evening.
Do we have someone here for easel report? I believe Laura Lovett. Welcome, Ms. Lovett. And Ms. Lovett is standing in the place of David Freeman for the easel report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Prince. My name is Laura Lovett Estima. I am an education support professional working in student records. I served the district as the district record specialist and records management liaison officer. This is my twenty-ninth year here in St. Lucie Public Schools, and as one of my constituents always says, it's a beautiful day here in St. Lucie County Public Schools. I'm proud to be employed here and to be a part of the framework. I am a member of the Education Association of St. Lucie, the executive board, and the treasurer. As you know, easel represents CTA, CU, and the professional and technical employees in our district. I want you to know that I am a product of St. Lucie County Public Schools. I graduated from Fort Pierce Westwood High School, now known as West Prep Magnet. Once a Panther, always a Panther. I have five children who have been nurtured here in St. Lucie. I have four graduates and one that's now a sophomore at West Prep Magnet. This speaks to my advocacy, my belief, dedication, and support of public education. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of all the employees in the district who aren't classroom teachers. Yes, I'm speaking of the fellow clerks and clerical staff, but also for the men and women who walk students to their buses every afternoon, the employees who are clear feeding tubes, the professionals who make floors shine, the ones who make sure no child goes hungry here in St. Lucie. You may not always know us, but we are here and we are doing the work and keeping things going every day. The public may not be aware, but the St. Lucie referendum is critical to us, too. Every dollar that supports teacher salaries helps this district continue to make steps to increase wages for educational support staff, too. A living wage for me and my fellow ESPs makes a real difference in the lives of the students in this district. It means we can continue living and working here. It means that the classroom para, translating for a newly arrived student from Haiti, is here, and the behavior tech that soothes an angry child is here, and so will the bus aides monitoring our most fragile children. Recently, our collaborative action with the district has helped to shed light on areas in which critical ESP positions are significantly underpaid, and we have begun to address that. With the referendum, we look forward to working with your team to do even more. The fact is, St. Lucie has great teachers who are supported by the work of many awesome ESPs, colleagues in every school and in every department. The referendum will lift us all. Thank you for your support, looking forward to our continued efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Lovett. At this time, we ask for CWA report. Anyone here to give that report? Moving right along, we do have our Youth Advisory Council report here. Is there anyone here?
Madam Chair, they won't be joining us until next month, as the schools are in the process of selecting their candidates this month.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Harley. Okay, we go right to, into our consent agenda. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, may I have a second? Sorry.
Make a motion.
A motion, and second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ingersoll made his motion, and Ms. Harley made the second. Any discussion, Board? Okay, we're gonna ask, at this time, that we vote. Any board members want to take any items out for discussion? Okay, I want to make sure we're clear on that. So at this time, may I have a vote?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, for informational report only, we have our charter school financial reports in front of each board member. Please make sure you read over these reports. And now, we want to go right into our, our superintendent and staff reports.
Good evening, everybody out there, and also board members, Chairwoman Mills. First of all, I just wanted to say congratulations. We had a primary on August twenty-third, and Chairwoman Mills, and Vice Chair Ingersoll, and Chairwoman Harley, congratulations on elections. I would encourage everyone, we do have a general election coming up November eighth. It is our constitutional, we've got Constitutional Week coming up next week, and the number one thing in a democracy is, is voting. It's so critically important, because if you don't vote, then you lose your voice in our country. So I would encourage anybody that's out there seated or out in our audience tonight to please make sure that you vote. I also wanted to recognize a couple of new administrators that are with us. The first is at Manatee Academy K-8, the former dean, Dan McCarty, who's now an assistant principal, Kirsten James. Can you please stand up? Kirsten was also one of my elite students at FAU, which I know we do have elite students that are here in the audience also as a requirement, but congratulations, Kirsten. We also stole an administrator from Jacksonville and the new assistant principal at Forest Grove Middle School, DeShawn Person. Could you please stand? And welcome, DeShawn. I actually believe I interviewed you. Yes, so I'm so happy to have you with us. Congratulations. I know you're gonna be making a difference at Forest Grove Middle School, so I'm so glad to see you tonight. I also wanted to thank our ROTC for being here and Master Sergeant Jason Joyce. I guess it's generational sometimes when things happen. For, you know, my older siblings, it was the assassination of JFK, and for my generation, it was nine eleven, and I remember exactly where I was in the school I was teaching at and working at when that happened. So I appreciate the flag folding ceremony and just, just a life transforming event for our country, and I appreciate all the servicemen and women that have, in some instances, given everything they have for our country, and I just wanted to make sure that I made a couple of comments about that. Some upcoming events, board members, you do have a flyer. It is our St. Lucie Public Schools College Fair. We have, although it says over fifty universities that will be there, it's now over sixty, I believe, Lydia. So please, we're advertising that, pushing that out to our students, and we will have, we'll have great representation with regards to our students and opportunities to enroll in college at the next level. I'm very, very excited. I want to thank all of our staff for putting that together. I also wanted to add a couple of more comments before I go. We're gonna be doing some upcoming, sharing with board members our, our new testing and what that is gonna entail, and many of our students are finishing the first progress monitoring, which is our new assessment in the state, and we actually have three this year, the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and then the end of the year. And I also want to congratulate, students will be receiving in the coming days a perfect score letter. If they had a perfect score on one of our end-of-course exams or the Florida State Assessment, that's really hard to do. I've never gotten one of those letters in my household, I could, you know, but many families do, and that's really exciting, and congratulations to those parents and also those children if they did get a perfect score on that. On a sad note, I'd also like to add that we, we lost two members of our St. Lucie family over the last few weeks unexpectedly, the loss of a couple of our employees. Linda Fletcher Owens was a, one of our custodians at Manatee Lakewood Park and FK Suite, and she passed suddenly a few weeks ago. And also Cheryl Boucher was a teacher at both White City, and she was most recently in Windmill Point. I'd ask you to keep their families in your prayers, because those losses were unexpected, not just for their family, but the St. Lucie Public School family. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Superintendent Prince. Attorneys report?
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. There is no report tonight.
Gonna move right on with the reports. We'll start with Mr. Ingersoll this evening.
Yes, ma'am. First off, I want to thank everyone that came out and voted on August the twenty-third, and appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve you in this manner, and it's exciting times, and it's gonna be an exciting four years. On October the eleventh through the sixteenth, Sunrise Kiwanis Club is rebuilding the J.C. Park, and we're looking for volunteers to use it as a team building experience. There's no experience, there's no construction skills necessary, Superintendent, so you and Jack can make it. But we have key clubs from different schools. I know Central's participating, Western's participating, and Centennial's participating. So this is an opportunity for clubs to come out, students to come out, obviously after school hours, but an opportunity for them to come out and build and work with people in the community, also for other organizations to get involved. It's gonna be, I don't know if you've ever been a part of the Rotary Club off of, behind the Civic Center, it's not the Civic Center, the county buildings, next to Longwood, we've, we've redone that one, and this one's the Kiwanis Club, and it's the old J.C. Park on the, on the island. So it's gonna be quite, quite, quite a bill. Thank you, ma'am.
Before we continue with our board members' report, is Ms. Cheryl Handy in the building? Okay, she's not in the building, but we do have a recommended action that needs to go forward. We need a motion and second to appoint Ms. Cheryl Handy as our School Board Citizen Member to the St. Lucie County Value Adjustment Board for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. I'll give a description just so, for the sake of our audience. The Value Assessment Board helps settle disputes between our taxpayers and our property This board was created by the state law to provide citizens with a forum to address complaints regarding the following: the property appraisers' assessment of property, the property appraisers' denial of an exemption or classification, or the tax collector's denial of a tax deferral. The Value Board is composed of two county commissioners, one school board member, and two citizen members, who approve and hire special magistrates to settle disputes during scheduled hearings. It is not associated with the property appraisal or the tax collector, and Ms. Cheryl Handy, we would like to appoint her this evening. So board members, can I please get a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Kelly.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion will carry five zero. Ms. Cheryl Handy, if you are listening to the board meeting this evening, we welcome you, and we thank you for your willingness to serve on such a valuable board to represent St. Lucie County Public Schools. And with that being said, we will go right on to our reports with Ms. Harley, and just go right straight on down the line here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I asked Mrs. Harrison to send each of you the Greater Florida Consortium of School Board Legislative Platform, which I hope you all received and read over the weekend. We do not take formal action on it as a board, but we do need to either reach consensus or not. We do participate in the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards, and their legislative program was developed at a meeting in late August. So at this time, board members, do you have any questions, thoughts, concerns? If not, I would ask, can we reach consensus on going forward with this as a member of the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards?
I have a question.
Sure.
So is this like?
So is this like the Florida School Board Association?
No. No, this is a separate consortium.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Got my approval.
Thumbs up? All right, we've reached consensus. Thank you so much. I have no other report tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, just wanted to mention, I'm proud of our ROTC, very impressive presentation. Also, I want to thank the DAR for being here, they're, that's an important group, you know, they help preserve the history of our country, things like the Constitution, and they just remind us what, how great our country was and our roots. And I just want to congratulate my fellow board members for their terrific wins in the election there, and glad to have you all back, and stew well. Behave yourself, okay? You know who I'm talking to, Donna. Right. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to say, start off by saying thank you to the Treasure Coast High School Junior ROTC, again, for their outstanding job. I mean, I saw you saying, you got goose pimples, yeah? You know, it really does something when you see that flag, and the majesty in which they folded that flag was just, to me, breathtaking. So I do, it was an outstanding job. And to echo what Dr. Prince said, you know, that the instructors, you know, they are amazing leaders, you know, to have a product, the product, end product, is what we saw today, you know? So I just really wanted to congratulate them. In the, I have had opportunity, an opportunity to visit Dan McCarty on more than a couple of occasions. I was given a tour over the summer by the assistant principal, Terrence Bariner, who was new to the school, but is passionate about being there and being a role model. He is vested in his school and his community. I would like to say also thank you to Principal Jesus Martinez, and the entire staff at Dan McCarty for their dedication and commitment. I was told, you know, on my tour, just visiting, seeing the staff, that there are staff members there that have been there for 30 years at the same school. You know, to me, I can't even imagine being at a job, the same school, or place, for 30 years. But that takes a lot of commitment, a lot of dedication, and passion for their jobs. So I really, really wanted to say thank you, you know, for their commitment. On my most recent visit, I met the new incoming principal, Mrs. Stubbs. We spoke about the strategies that she is implementing for the students at Dan McCarty. One thing she kept saying to me, more than one occasion that we were, she kept saying, she was back home. She, Dan McCarty, was the first school she taught at in St. Lucy County. She was assigned to other schools, but now she's come full circle. She's back home, this time as a principal. Home is where the heart is, and Dan McCarty is where her heart is. I believe that Dan McCarty is moving in the right direction. We are moving on up to that east side. We walked about, I'm sorry, we talked about the amazing show of support for the community at their Tunnel of Hope. The community showed up in abundance. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. Well, the picture Mrs. Stubbs showed me, if you ask me what that picture was saying, I would say it's saying, "You have my support." I was very impressed and encouraged. The picture, there were so many people, community partners, parents, so many people that showed up for that, for Dan McCarty's Tunnel of Hope. I was very impressed and encouraged, and I would like to thank our community partners for their support as well. I'm hoping that this coming together of our community to support Dan McCarty will grow with time. I encourage the community to visit, take a tour of Dan McCarty, and see all the good things that's happening there. I am sure that Dan McCarty could use some volunteers as well, just saying. Dan McCarty's mission statement is that they are preparing each child to be a value member of society by providing the social and academic skills to succeed. What a mission statement. So I would like to say to Mrs. Stubbs, welcome home. I also had an opportunity to visit Francis K. Sweet over the summer. This school is another one of the best-kept secrets in St. Lucy County. Francis K. Sweet Elementary used to be a magnet school for traditional academics, and Francis K. Sweet, now as it is, is epitomizing for me what a caring, safe, and welcoming environment looks like. To say I am impressed with what I saw on the campus is an understatement. The staff is exceptional, the students, well behaved, and learning is the name of the game. Everything has a place, and everything was in its place. Very well put together, a very conducive environment for learning. Well done, Mrs. Jackson. The day I visited Francis K. Sweet was superhero day, and most everyone was in costume. Principal Jackson was Wonder Woman principal. As I was touring the campus, I was introduced to Leilani Sosa, she's a student. She was Captain Joy. Her superpower was her bubble machine, and she was spreading joy all over the school and in the classroom. On that day, I needed some joy, and I got my joy hug. She was so full of love, she made my day. I told her that I would come and see her to replenish my joy when I ran out. So I want to say thank you to Principal Jackson and your amazing staff for the level of excellence you bring to Francis K. Sweet. And I know, Prince, Dr. Prince has said this, but I'm going to say it again, that I would like to offer our condolences on behalf of the board to the bereaved family of Mr. Ralph Jensen. Mr. Jensen served faithfully as the school board's citizen member on the Value Adjustment Board for 14 years. We would like to offer our condolences also to Ms. Bustner's family. She was the VPK teacher at Windmill Point, and also to the family of Mrs. Owens. Did you say that, principal? Okay, all right. Superintendent, so to these families, our deepest sympathy, please know that you are and will continue to be in so many thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
And we indeed do offer our condolences to the grieving families. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. On a lighter note, guess who received a perfect score on the state assessments?
Who?
My grandson. My grandson got a five in math. Congratulations, Caleb.
Congratulations.
And all of the rest of you powerhouse-brained children that we have in St. Lucy County schools. Congratulations to each of you, for those of you that could possibly make that five. Okay, I want to thank also the community for your vote. We are here, and we will be here, to serve you for the next four years, and we appreciate you coming out. Your vote is extremely important, extremely important, and you've shown that you have faith in us to continue being the leaders here in St. Lucy County Public Schools as a school board. So we do appreciate what you have done to have us come back. And thank you also, and those of you, there's someone sitting right here that I'm personally not going to call out, but I thank you, we thank you, for your donations, and for your time that you gave to ensure that we can get back in this seat. And Tunnel of Hope, it's already been mentioned to those in the community that came out for all of our different Tunnel of Hopes. They were at several of our schools, and all board members attended Tunnel of Hopes out in St. Lucy County Public Schools during the opening session, and we thank the community for, I mean, the community really came out in a big way to greet our children for their first day and first week of school. So we want to thank you for that as well. And now, we're going to go right into our scheduled speakers. We're gonna start with Ms. Dale. Would you please come forward? And as you come forward, I'm sure you know that you have five minutes, and our attorney will let you know when you're about 30 seconds to close up. Left.
Good. Hi, I'm Dale Galliano, St. Lucy County. First, congrats on your electoral wins. That doesn't mean you can get out of reading the books now, you just have to continue on. So I look forward to working with you continually as we move forward in all of these different things. Schools up and running, and with that came phone calls to me with the different paperwork, with opt-in, opt-out, and what to do and what not to do. There was some confused concern for parents, and what it means and what it doesn't mean, all needing to get through the new policies, and sort of what to expect. With the call, one thing came abundantly clear, if they recall. Many parents and grandparents, and parents, foster parents, were concerned of putting their children in a position in which compromised their child. They weren't too sure on how it all worked. The surprise was not so much on how their kids would treat them, but their teachers. And it was interesting to hear that, at the very least. I don't know if it's the press, or the block moms that they get together over the summer break, but some do have some personal info from their own children. Many spoke of not wanting to come here for the same fear for their child. Then I got a call from a parent of a fifth-grade child in River Park Elementary on a book called Breakaway. This is the one I got out of the library. This concerned mom wanted me to check if the book was on the list of appropriate books for the state and for here. Because of her closer inspection, she wasn't happy that her 10-year-old child was looking and reading this book. Well, I checked the usual lists, and I went to Destiny Link, and everything was there except for this book. It said it is not in any of the schools and the media centers in the county. Yet I had the picture that was taken there of the book in the school. Come to find out, this book is part of a teacher's own personal classroom library. Now, here, the book is in the public library, but the one that I have a picture of says at the very bottom, Scholastic. Now, being that it says Scholastic, making one think that it is part of a curriculum, but it's not. But that was put on by a publisher to make it blend within the system. The parent was confused, thinking that the book was okay with you, the school board, and of course, the social media, the media center people. Parents find out the book does not have an inappropriate, does have an inappropriate content, definitely things that she doesn't want her child to read or participate in. Makes one want to know what else is in the schools that we don't know about. The new policy manual, which is definitely an improvement, should be more explicit on the type of thing to keep parents in the loop, not only on the media centers, but also in the classroom teacher's special stashes. Surprisingly, there is nothing on the policy on teacher classroom books. Everything is set by the school board and the trained media center specialists, and according to the state law. Shouldn't parents be given a complete list of the books to opt-in or opt-out? Something else comes to mind. Matthew 7:13, "Watch out for false prophets. They come to you in sheep's clothing, and inwardly they are ferocious wolves." Time to maybe look at the policy again, and attend, amend possibly part of the policy to include the teacher's stashes. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Susan Sedino. Welcome, Ms. Sedino.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Prince, board members. First, I also would like to congratulate everybody on their successful elections, and I'm sure you're all happy that that's behind you for at least another four years. It's a new school year, and as long as the good Lord allows me to, I'll be here every month, and to advocate for the children of St. Lucy County. I pray to God that we're all on the same page, and that that protect our children is our most precious goal. We did manage to make some strides last year, but we cannot be complacent. My goal this year is to get more involved on the school level. I would like to work with the principals and the parent teachers organizations in each school to see if we can get more parents involved. More parents is the key to a successful education, and I would like to try to accomplish that, because God knows, I need all the help I can get. I'm looking forward to a great year. Keep going.
Thank you, Ms. Sedino, and thank you so much for your commitment to now become a volunteer, more of a volunteer in the public school system. That is what we need. We need parents to come and help. Thank you so much. All right, meeting adjourned.